Okay, Sergeants, will you please start your recordings? According to the PC all set?
I can gather.
According to the cloud also.
Good afternoon and welcome to the remote hearing on economic development. Will council members and staff, please turn on a video at this time. To minimize disruptions, please place our cell phones, electronics to vibrate. To send testimony, please send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good afternoon and welcome to this oversight hearing of the Economic Development Committee of the New York City Council. Today is Wednesday, April 27, 2022. My name is Amanda Farias and I am the Chair of the, of this committee. The purpose of today's hearing is to discuss the impact that the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center has on the city. In terms of the services it provides, the resiliency of its property and the people it employs on the Hunts Point Peninsula in the Bronx. The Hunts Point Food Distribution Center, or the FTC for short, is one of the largest food distribution centers in the world. It is comprised of three large cooperative markets selling meat, fish and produce, as well as other large food distributors. The land used for the markets is mostly city-owned and parcels are separately leased to each of the cooperatives and food distributors via the city's Economic Development Corporation. The EDC and the Meat Cooperative recently negotiated a 40-year lease term in 2018. The produce market's lease was just extended by 10 years to 2031, and the fish market's lease does not expire until 2054. In spite of the lease renewals, several lingering issues remain at Hunts Point. These include the need for continued facility improvements in space, overlapping or duplicate regulatory burdens for food businesses, and ongoing climate resiliency concerns due to much of the FTC's location being within the city's 100-year floodplain. During Hurricane Sandy in 2012, the area around Hunts Point lost power for roughly 36 hours, which mercifully did not result in catastrophic losses to the region, regional food supply. However, if the power was out for much longer than there could have been 2 million in daily direct economic loss for the markets and the local economy. It is terrifying to consider that such a vital part of our city's food and economic systems could have been so vulnerable to climate, that climate damage. Part of what the committee looks to discuss today is the new administration's plans to fortify Hunts Point against future catastrophic storms. Here, I would like to acknowledge the tireless work being done by my colleague, Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, who represents District 17 in the Bronx and his work towards improving the Hunts Point wholesale and residential communities during his time at the council. I know Councilmember Salamanca has worked with both the current and previous administrations to improve the climate resiliency of Hunts Point, and has also sought to ensure that the markets continue to employ people from the area in stable, quality jobs that allow them to support their families. The goal of today's hearing is to determine how the largely new city council can partner with the new administration to build upon the work done under the last mayor towards protecting Hunts Point. Mayor Adams's new blueprint has dedicated $100 million towards improving the market and an additional $40 million to the neighborhoods around the market. We hope to partner with the mayor and EDC to ensure the appropriate utilization of this funding, as well as additional funds from state and federal sources. We also plan on discussing what ongoing steps the new administration is taking in the areas of floodproofing and energy resiliency, how union labor is being employed at the markets, and the challenges the markets are facing with respect to expansion and further infrastructure development. In addition to the Economic Development Corporation, we look forward to hearing testimony today from the Business Integrity Commission, which plays a vital role at the market in its enforcement capacity. With that said, I would like to take a moment to acknowledge the other council members present today. Councilmember Salamanca, as I mentioned, and Councilmember Ari Kagan. I'll now turn the floor over to my colleague, Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, to say a few words.
Chair, before we send it to Councilmember Salamanca, I'm just going to turn it to one of the sergeants real quickly because we're having a minor tech problem in the background.
Sounds good.
You'll just take a minute.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Farias. Sergeant Armis, let me know when I can give my brief statement.
Soon as we get the situation corrected, we'll let you know.
Thank you.
Councilmember Salamanca, you could continue.
Thank you. Thank you, Sergeant Arms. First, I want to thank Chair Farias for putting together this important hearing on the Hunts Point Food Distribution Centers as a whole. You know, the, the markets, Hunts Point as a whole and the markets played, have played an important role in my life, just like it's played an important role in thousands and thousands of New Yorkers' lives. My dad was, uh, worked in the Hunts Point Produce Market for over 18 years, and he was a proud member of Teamsters Local 202. And it was through that good-paying job as a union member that he was able to provide food in our tables. It was through that job, that union job that my dad had, where he had benefits, health benefits especially, that helped out my sister, my mom, and myself. And so I know what it is to have a good-paying job, having, having a dad or a parent as a union member with a good-paying job and being able to provide for their families. And so that's why I take the, the employment in the market so seriously, because it provides, i- it provides, it, it provides for thousands and thousands of families. In Hunts Point, we have the meat market, fish market, produce market in over 700 businesses, and they keep our city fed. And so we, as a council, have a responsibility to ensure that they have all the resources necessary, and especially an updated facility, so that they can continue to provide this core service to New Yorkers. So today, I look forward to hearing from EDC on a variety of things. First, I wanted, I would like to get an update as to where are we with the new facility for the produce market? You know, in terms, especially in terms of funding, I know that past administrations have allocated capital dollars, and hopefully EDC can give us a total amount of what's actually in the bank. I would like to get an update from EDC as well as to where are we with the capital needs that the meat market needs? You know, they're, 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 they need a new facade, they need a new system in terms of cold air. But most importantly, years ago, in the past administration, in conjunction with my office, we allocated funding in the meat market for a power grid. I would like to get an update from EDC as to, is the power grid working? If not, why isn't it working? And I also would like to get an update from EDC in this hearing in terms of where are we with the capital needs for the fish market? And finally, I'm excited to see that there's someone here from BIC. The BIC plays an important role because they have oversight, ensuring that, you know, there's no organized crime and that things are being done the way they should be done legally. But I'm interested in knowing who are BIC's oversight now? In terms of the fees that they charge every business, the fees that they're charging every individual employee that works in, in these businesses? And finally, I want to talk about the overzealous enforcement from officers from BIC in terms of their behavior in the markets. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to you, Chair Farias. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Salamanca. And for being here, I know this is an important space for you and in your community. Before we turn the floor over to the administration, I would like to thank the Economic Development Committee staff, Legislative Council Alex Polanoff, Senior Policy Analyst William Hungatch, and Finance Unit Head Aliya Ali for all of their hard work putting this hearing together and their continuous work with me. I'll now turn it over to our moderator, Alex Polanoff, to go over some procedural items. And right before that, I'm sorry, Alex, I'd like to acknowledge Councilmember Kevin Riley, who joined us.
Great. Thank you, Chair Farias. As the chair said, my name is Alex Polanoff, and I'm counsel to the New York City Council's Committee on Economic Development. Before we begin, I'd like to remind everyone that you will be on mute until you are recognized to speak, at which time you will be unmuted by the Zoom host. If you mute yourself after you've been unmuted, you will need to be unmuted again by the host. Please be aware that there could be a delay in muting and unmuting, so please be patient with us. The first panelist to give testimony today will be Sabrina Lippman, the Senior Vice President at the New York City Economic Development Corporation. Nicholas Stabile, EDC's Assistant Vice President for Legislative Affairs, and Spiros Mustakis, the Executive Agency Counsel and Market Manager at the Business Integrity Commission, will be available for questioning. I will call on each of you shortly when it is time to begin your testimony. During the hearing, if council members would like to ask questions of the administration or of a specific panelist, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and I will call on you in order. We will be limiting the first round of council member questions to three minutes, which includes the time it takes to answer those questions. Before we begin testimony, I will administer the oath. To all members of the administration who will be offering testimony or will be available for questions, please raise your right hands. I will call on you each individually for a response. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth for this committee today, and to respond honestly to council member questions? Senior Vice President Lippman?
I do.
Assistant Vice President Stabile?
I do.
Executive Agency Counsel Mustakis?
I do.
Thank you. Senior Vice President Lippman, you may begin when ready.
Thank you so much, Alex, and it's just such a pleasure to see so many familiar faces. Good afternoon, Chair Farias and members of the Economic Development Committee. My name is Sabrina Lippman, and I am the Senior Vice President at the New York City Economic Development Corporation, who oversees the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center. I am pleased to testify at today's hearing on the economic impact of the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center. I am joined by my colleagues Nicholas Stabile, EDC's Assistant Vice President for Legislative Affairs, and Spiros Mustakis, Executive Agency Counsel and Market Manager at the Business Integrity Commission. The Hunts Point Food Distribution Center, which you will see on the slide in front of you, also known as the FTC, is the single largest geographic cluster of food sources for the city. It sits on about 329 acres. Simply put, Hunts Point feeds the tri-state area. We estimate that four and a half billion pounds of food is distributed through the FTC every single year, and about 50% of the food that passes through Hunts Point ends up in New York City, while the other half ends up in cities across the East Coast and beyond. The FTC is comprised of over 100 public and private wholesalers, distributors and manufacturers, including the Hunts Point Terminal Produce Market, the Hunts Point Cooperative Meat Market, and the New Fulton Fish Market. Close to 50% of the customers at the FTC are independent restaurants and cafes, 20% are bodegas, 18% are supermarkets, and 14% are food markets. The FTC provides food to more than 23,000 restaurants and engages with over 2,500 greengrocers annually. Together, the FTC is home to approximately 8,300 direct jobs, most of which are good-paying, family-sustaining jobs proudly filled by Bronxites. Previously, home to steel mills and power plants, the Hunts Point neighborhood experienced a radical shift in the 1960s as economic trends impacted legacy industry on the peninsula. At that time, the city released a bold plan to create a food distribution center on Hunts Point. The location was well-positioned for the movement of goods at different and many avenues, including rail, highway and water. And by locating New York City's primary facilities for meat and produce wholesalers at one full-service hub, it became exponentially easier for the vendors to purchase all of the food they needed in one single location. Less than a decade later, the Hunts Point Cooperative Market and Hunts Point Terminal Market were born, which are known today as the Meat Market and the Produce Market respectively. Over the last 50 years, the way in which goods and merchandise have been moved and stored at these facilities has changed significantly, and we continue to work with the tenants at the FTC to meet these changing needs. The city has made significant investments in securing and ensuring that the food supply chain remains strong, including $150 million commitment from the de Blasio administration to bring different parts of the FTC into a state of good repair. This investment supports FTC-wide infrastructure improvements remediation, the construction of the new Grow NYC facility, fish and meat market improvements, and includes a, an allocation for the produce market's redevelopment. We are now seeking to redevelop the produce market, which opens in 1967, into a modern, resilient and Food Safety Modernization Act compliant facility with expanded warehouse capacity, which will be critical in reducing emissions and improving traffic circulation within the FTC. Last month, Mayor Adams committed $100 million to the produce market redevelopment. In the administration's blueprint for economic recovery, redevelopment of the produce market will protect and strengthen the food supply chain on the city, regional and national levels. It will retain the 2,000 quality jobs at the produce market. It will reduce emissions and improve traffic circulation on city-owned land in the environmental justice neighborhood of Hunts Point. It will support produce market business growth and achieve more efficient land use, and it will create a global archetype for 21st century urban food distribution. We are especially pleased to be working closely with Councilmember Salamanca on the produce market redevelopment. We are also actively working to make sure that the FTC is not only prepared for climate change, but also sustainable. Since our last hearing in 2019, in partnership with our tenants, we have made significant strides towards these goals, including providing backup power to the meat market to maintain energy continuity, HESCO barriers at the meat market to protect against storm surge, installing solar on the roof of Crasdale to power the building and provide clean energy to the community, and working with each of our tenants on emergency operational plans so that they can respond to a disaster. Fortunately, many of the buildings at the FTC are naturally elevated, limiting their exposure to sandy-like storm surge. We are also advancing the backup power to the produce market and 600 Food Center Drive in case of a power outage. And we are in the beginning stages of a comprehensive energy study at the Food Distribution Center, a plan that will provide diversified recommendations about how to make the campus as environmentally sustainable as possible. Together, our work at the FTC will grow this cluster of commerce and jobs and ensure that local residents continue to benefit from the presence of this concentration of market and food manufacturers, as well as prepare the FTC for climate change and energy sustainability. Thank you so much for the opportunity to talk about the Food Distribution Center and Hunts Point today, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Lippman. I'll now turn it over to questions from the chair. Panelists from the administration, please stay unmuted if possible during this question and answer period. And a reminder to Chair Farias, you will be in control of muting and unmuting yourself during this period. Chair Farias, you may begin when ready.
Great, thank you. Putting me to work today. I have to unmute myself too. Hello, good afternoon. Thank you so much for, for testifying again. The, the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center is one of the largest food distribution centers in the world. We're very proud of that in the Bronx. It's comprised of three large cooperatives, the produce, meat and fish markets, and other large distributors like Baldor. Could you give us an overview of the land at the FTC? How much is city land versus state, federal or private land? And how does the EDC work with the states to coordinate any use of the land at Hunts Point, if at all?
Absolutely. Thank you so much for that, for that question, Chair Farias. All right, can you hear me? Yes, okay. Thank you for that question. So the Food Distribution Center, the 329 acres that I referenced, are all SBS property, so it is all city-owned land. There is state ownership of that land. And so in, in, as part of the master lease, which we, in the city, EDC serves as lease administrator for that land.
Okay, I don't know how I ended up back on mute, but we're, we're figuring it out. Do we know the percentage of the land that's currently unused?
That's a very good question. In terms of, the way we look at it is as parcels, so I don't necessarily have an exact percentage for you, but we are really proud that we've been able to activate the vast majority of the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center, and very few development parcels remain for the future. So we are definitely laser-like focused on finding ways to ensure that every, every piece of land is activated.
Great, yeah, if we, I mean, if we can get a follow-up with just like how much is unused and?
Absolutely. We will definitely circle back with your team on the exact acreage that's unused.
I'd like to acknowledge council members Nantasha Williams and Jennifer Gutierrez that have joined us here. So, can you give us an overview of the food distribution businesses with separate leases that are not a part of the three cooperatives? How many separately leased businesses are there?
Absolutely. So we have 10 tenants in total at the Food Distribution Center, three of which you just named are the three cooperatives that we have there. The other seven tenants are Baldor, which I think was mentioned earlier. We also have Dairyland Chef's Warehouse, that is their own business. We have Crasdale, Anheuser-Busch, which is also on its own parcel. Sultana and Citarella are two businesses that are within what we call the 600 Food Center Drive, which is an EDC-operated building. And then last but not least, of course, Grow NYC, which we're so excited to see open.
Can you explain roughly how restaurants and markets in the city benefit from having the markets in such a close proximity?
I am so sorry, I'm just, I couldn't hear that. So can you, can you repeat the question, Chair Farias?
Explain roughly how restaurants and markets in the city benefit from having the markets in such close proximity?
Absolutely. It is incredibly beneficial to have geographic clusters of food distribution. And the reason for that is it, they all benefit from the proximity of one another, because as you can imagine, whether it's a grocer or a restaurateur, it allows for a single point and a singular hub where different restaurants and businesses can be clients and, and be able to deliver and receive produce, meat, fish, and other non-perishable items in one single location. So it reduces truck traffic. It kind of is a one-stop shop, if you will.
And what is the nature of the relationship between the market and EDC? I have a couple of questions that I can run through. Well, let's start there with, with the relationship between the two, and then I'll run through the floor.
So the relationship is a landlord-tenant relationship? So we are the landlord for the 10 tenants that we just described, all of which are on differing varietal of terms of leases. And so we are what we would call the master landlord, and the tenants have significant rights and responsibilities for their land, since most of them are on long-term ground leases.
And if the cooperatives at, at the markets wish to do any capital improvements, what's the approval process for EDC as the landlord? Or any improvements or infrastructure investments, like can they make them as a right?
They can. They absolutely can make their own improvements as a right. Every lease is different, so there's different levels to that, so I do want to preface that. But I am unbelievably proud of the relationships we have built, especially in the recent years, with not only the three cooperatives, but all the companies and businesses that are operating out of the FTC. And so as partners, we work with them very closely to determine what their needs are and to ensure that we are able to advocate for the infrastructure needs that they might need.
Great, thank you. Can you talk a little bit about the day-to-day repairs and upkeep that EDC makes to the markets, if any at all?
So if we specifically look at the three markets, each one has different engagement with EDC. So I'll start with the fish market. We are most involved in the fish market because we, in their recent lease, understood that they needed some support in operational maintenance. And so we actually operate and maintain that facility's common area. For the meat market and the produce market, both of those markets under their leases are responsible for operations and maintenance of the asset.
Okay, and if there's any emergency expenses, like damaged roofs, flood recovery, is that landlord responsibility or tenant responsibility for payment?
I'm so sorry, Chair Farias, if there's any damage on?
Is any, any damages for like emergency preparedness?
Yes.
Like roofs or anything like that?
So again, each lease is, is unique in how it delineates responsibility. But when it comes to emergency preparedness, as I mentioned in the testimony, we are absolutely laser-like focused in being partners in this arena. So we have worked with each tenant to help prepare their emergency plans. We ensure that we have met the needs of each tenant in terms of working closely with them to identify what those elements are that they need and advocate for those.
Great, and does the EDC meet with market board members? If so, how often?
Absolutely. It also, that also varies per, per lease. But we sit on the Meat Market Board meeting, so Bruce and Andy, who I know are on the call, see, see me pretty often, along with my team, on a monthly basis. I know Phil's on the call, Phil and, and us over at the produce market. We are in constant communication and just meet with their board on a regular basis, especially with the, with the conversation that we're having with the redevelopment. And because we operate the fish market, we are constantly on-site there.
Awesome. I'm, are, can we, can you give me an idea on like recent upgrades EDC has made to the markets? Or maybe is planning to make any upgrades to refrigeration systems or any energy generator systems, building structure upgrades?
Absolutely. So maybe a good place to start is at the meat market, since a part of their, a part of the $150 million revitalization, we made some significant investments. We are incredibly proud of the strong partnership we have built there, and we have several ongoing and upcoming city capital infrastructure improvements happening at the meat market. We've done hot water system upgrades. We are in the process of, of starting up paving and site improvements. As Councilmember Salamanca mentioned, we have some significant facade improvements that need to be made there. We are undergoing one building upcoming and are looking to hopefully secure additional funding for the remaining three. We have been able to install a backup generator, which is absolutely, as, as you've heard over and over again, critical to ensuring that the food supply chain, particularly at the meat market, is saved and preserved. And so that scope is completed, and we are, in the coming weeks, turning that generator over to the meat market, but it is connected to the meat market should anything happen. A replacement of, an elevation of the electrical equipment is a part of this scope. Central plant upgrades. And as mentioned, we are also very interested in ensuring that we can secure subsidy and funding to improve brine tunnels, which is the refrigeration piece.
Great. I'd like to talk a little bit about the individual markets themselves. I can start off with produce. The city and the produce market negotiated a 10-year lease extension in 2021 that expires in 2031. Could you provide us with details of the new lease extension? What is the long-term plan for this lease on the produce market? And if there's currently any ongoing lease negotiations beyond the tenure?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned earlier, we are just so incredibly thrilled with the announcement that our mayor made of $100 million down payment towards the redevelopment of the produce market. The produce market lease is part of a 45-year lease that they've had since, I think, early 1980s. And so they exercise their last 10-year option. That's the 2021 amendment. I think, early 1980s. And so they exercise their last 10-year option. That's the 2021 amendment, is the ability to exercise that last 10-year option. So which brings us into 2031. And as a part of that extension, part of that, the language in that amendment is to work together to ensure that we can find a way to redevelop this produce market and ensure its its ability and remain in place for the long term. And so as we are seeking to redevelop the produce market into this modern, resilient, FSMA-compliant facility with expanded warehouse capacity, we are in constant conversation with them about, and are candidly in the early stages of ensuring that we build the right market for this cooperative.
Great, thank you. Most of the loading docks in the produce market are used as extensions of the vendor space and refrigerated trailers running on diesel fuel. This has an adverse impact on the respiratory health, not only of the market workers, but on neighboring communities as well. I grew up in Soundview and have grown up with asthma since the age of nine. It's really, really close across the water from the market. So what plans, if any, are in the works to reduce the number of diesel truck trailers, use the storage space? And will the redesign of the produce market enlarge and enclose these spaces? And eliminate the need for the trucks?
Absolutely. And Chair Fadias, we share your concern about the asthma rates in the local neighborhood. And we are working to advance several environmental justice elements and initiatives in the Hunts Point neighborhood. At the FTC, we are 100% committed to working closely with the produce market. And I am very, very adamant about, as EDC is, about the fact that this redevelopment of the produce market will eliminate every single diesel-emitting stationary TRU that is currently on-site. The expanded warehouse capacity will allow for all of those TRUs to come offline. And the cold chain compliance will also support reducing the emissions. Not only that, the redevelopment also significantly improves both traffic circulation to reduce the amount of truck idling that happens in just, you know, the traffic congestion that we have there. And it improves the efficiency of rail use, which we want to encourage. And so we're very, very excited that this redevelopment will achieve those goals.
Great. That's really great to hear. I kind of was not expecting to hear the elimination of all of it. So that's very exciting for me. But it does bring up, do we have a rough timeline and a cost estimate of what that really is for the market?
It's the right question to ask. We are still in the early stages here and we are working continuously with the produce market to identify that scope and design, which will ultimately give us that answer, right? It'll give us the construction schedule. It'll give us the the exact need for, in terms of size of subsidy needed. The, again, the $100 million down payment is critical to moving this project forward, but we are definitely looking to our friends at the state and the federal level to help make this project a reality.
Yeah, that's, that's great. Please keep us in the loop of all that, as I know you will. So as we mentioned, EDC announced plans to redevelop the produce market in 2019. The mayor's blueprint announced $100 million for the market redevelopment and $40 million for the nearby Bronx neighborhoods. What details can you share about the produce market's redevelopment plans? Particularly also, how will the $40 million for the neighborhood be spent? The locality, the local surrounding communities are really important to me in terms of how that money is disseminated and for what are its uses? And was the $140 million allocation separate from the amount reserved for the market's lease extension?
Yes, the money is separate from, well, we had, we have $100 million that came from Mayor Adams just last month. That is in addition to the $30 million that was allocated in the de Blasio administration. So from the city perspective, it's $130 million total that we have allocated directly for the redevelopment of the produce market. The $40 million allocation is stemming from our Hunts Point Forward Plan that we are unbelievably excited about. And my colleagues who are driving that have just done a remarkable, have really launched a remarkable initiative there. And so that plan is due to be released very soon. And I know that our team is circling, will circle back with you, Chair Fadias, and the committee as we get closer to that announcement. And that is the place where they will be able to disseminate how the $40 million is, in conjunction with the community's needs, going to be distributed. But the $130 million that we currently have allocated for the Hunts Point Produce Market redevelopment is what we currently have allocated for that project and are always looking for additional sources of funding.
Great, thank you for that response. In 2012, the city, state, and federal governments committed a combined $172.5 million investment in improvements at the produce market. Are there any remaining funds that have not been used or put to use from this pot of money?
Can you reference the pot of money again?
One second.
Is that the $150 million from the de Blasio administration that was allocated?
Alex, would you happen to have it in front of you in terms of the $172 total? It says, I think it was during the lease negotiations in 2012, they secured $172 million in funding for redevelopment at Hunts Point. It included $50 million from the state, $87.5 million in capital and tax incentives from the city, $10 million from the Department of Transit, US Department of Transportation for a grant for freight rail improvements on the market, and then $25 million from the Federal Congestion Mitigation and Air Quality Improvement Program. That's the 1725.
That's, okay. We do have the $25 million congestion air quality is funding that we consider state funding, because it's like our state CMAC grant. So that will be fully allocated and we are working with our friends at State DOT to ensure that we can allocate those funds to the produce market redevelopment. So yes, that is there. The state funding piece, I'm not directly familiar with, the $50 million as well. So that I do need to just go back and come back to you, Chair Fadias, just to confirm those numbers.
Yeah, what we can do is, I'll send you the breakdown that I have here. Sorry it took me a second. I have lots of highlighted notes. And always for these hearings. So we can send that to you and see and get some follow-up on it.
Absolutely. That would be great. Absolutely. And we'll make sure to circle back with you on that.
Okay, great. Thank you. The Meat Market's lease was renewed for 40 years in 2018. There's also vacancy city-owned property adjacent to the Meat Market. Are there any plans to develop that space? Is there a possibility of incorporating that space into any of the existing meat, I mean, the existing market leases?
We are always interested in facilitating the expansion of the Food Distribution Center and we are in current conversations with the Meat Market in regards to that site.
Awesome. In 2012, USDOT, as I just mentioned, awarded $10 million grant for freight rail improvements at the produce market. Were these improvements made? Are there other freight rail improvements that the city is seeking to make through Freight NYC?
Yes, those improvements were made to the Sawtooth Rail. Back then, and those improvements were completed and it allowed for us to be able to increase rail capacity there on the, for more efficient transfer of like potatoes and onions from those rail cars that come in from the West Coast. And we are always, the movement of goods by rail and freight is critical for us and helps us reduce emissions. And so we're excited with the redevelopment to make sure that we have that type of prog, that type of progress built in.
Awesome. The next question I have is around marine stuff. I'm particularly interested in how we get back on waterways. So in March 2019, EDC issued an RFP for an operator to develop a marine terminal on the Hunts Point Peninsula to encourage barge shipping to and from Hunts Point. Did EDC end up selecting an awardee for the marine terminal development? And if so, how is it progressing?
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. I am sorry to report in that specific instance that RFP process failed. And that was primarily due to the, if COVID-19 really was the factor that didn't allow that RFP to be successful. However, the movement of goods by water will provide a vital, you know, backdoor to the Food Distribution Center and helps reduce local truck trips. So we're seeking to find ways to ensure that we can leverage its proximity to the water. And I know that the team is working on a pilot project currently with a local distributor to start doing case studies, right, to only strengthen that, strengthen the case for that. And we are excited to circle back and give you the results of that project, that pilot.
Okay, great. Is there any interest or plans to reissue the RFP?
That is actually, one of my colleagues is running that, so I will, I can circle back with you in terms of what the next steps are for the RFP process.
Okay, great. Yeah, I'd like to know, just because I would also make the assumption that the EDC allocated a pot of funds to that development of a barge. And if that pilot failed and we don't have an RFP, then how is that money getting reutilized or reallocated into an area for either movement of stuff by freight? Or if that effort is going towards going back on to the water, even if it's without a barge? So awesome, yeah. Any info on that would be great.
Absolutely.
I'd like to ask a little bit about workforce. How many of the employees at each market are union members?
We don't have an exact number for you, but I can tell you over, and I'm sure, you know, Phil and I'm looking at Danny, will have tons of answers for you there, because they have a significant Deepsters Local 202 stronghold on the produce market, and the vast majority of employees are part of that union. The Meat Market has a meatpacking union on-site as well, where significant number of employees are doing that. The Fish Market has the United Seafood Workers Union, Local 359. And so we are incredibly proud of these good-paying, family-sustaining jobs that the FTC is able to provide and are excited to continue to find ways to expand that.
Okay, great, thank you. Before I continue on, because I'm going to reorganize some of my questions, I see that Councilmember Salamanca has his hands raised, hand raised, or maybe both, not sure, but we'll let him ask his question.
All right. Hello, everyone. Thank you, Chair Fadias, for allowing me to speak. Sabrina, I really want to thank you and your team. You know, I do have some tough questions for you, but I want to say how delightful it is to work with yourself, Nate and Fernando Ortiz, you know, on the first Hunts Point Forward Plan, which I'm extremely, I'm excited about. And I'm extremely thankful, and I've let the mayor know, on his investment in Hunts Point of the $140 million announcement that he made last month. Now, I want to get straight to the funding for the produce market. How much, what is the dollar amount that we have today in the bank for a new facility for the produce market?
We have $130 million from the city in city subsidy, and we have $25 million in the USDOT CMAC grant that we expect will be allocated.
And that's what you have in the bank right now as we speak?
Correct.
All right. The, now this $130 million, is that including the $100 million from Eric Adams, Mayor Adams?
Yes, sir.
All right. So prior to the mayor's announcement, you only had $30 million from city dollars for the market?
Specifically allocated to the redevelopment, that's correct.
How much funding did then Mayor de Blasio allocate to the market in his eight years? Which is specifically just for that project?
Specifically, specifically for the produce market redevelopment, it was $30 million in the funds, which is the $30 million that I'm referencing.
Just a $30 million. And so, okay, so de Blasio puts in 30, Eric Adams puts in 100. How much did Mayor Bloomberg put in at the time?
That's a great question, Councilmember. I'd have to, I'd have to look back and circle back with you on that number.
Now, the funding that's there, because I know that there's been capital improvements done in the markets. The rail was done. I don't know what other work, but I know rail was done. Where did that money come from?
So there was a combination of funding for the rail. Was generally the...
Sorry, Sabrina, you're kind of breaking up right now on your video.
Chair, it looks like Sabrina may have frozen. Is Nick, Nick, is your camera working? Because we can turn to Nick.
Yeah, I'm here. Give us one second. We'll try to solve this tech issue. Sometimes we have some chunky wifi to sit, one moment.
Madam Chair, while we wait to fix the issues with the, with EDC, is it possible that I can ask the Business Integrity Commission if they're here, some questions on their role?
Sure, go ahead.
All right. Is there a representative from BIC?
I'm here, Councilmember. Good afternoon.
How are you? Okay, I see you now. All right, thank you. Hey, first, I would, I just, I would want to congratulate the new BIC Commissioner and look forward to working with them and having a one-on-one, maybe doing a tour of the market. I can't, I'm not going to be able to express all my concerns here today, but I do have some concerns on some of the operations, that big oversight that BIC has in the markets. And I just want to have this open dialogue like I have with the prior administration there. So BIC, you've played an important role. I remember my dad working in the markets and my dad coming home and saying, hey, they came in and they just arrested a bunch of people for organized crime. And, you know, the BIC served this purpose. You came in, you clean house and ensure that, you know, that businesses were buying by the law. Now, I know that you've been there ever since. My question is, you charge every business fees to operate, right? And you charge every individual a fee to have a BIC, what I call a BIC license. You may have the right word for that. What is the dollar amount that you charge every business?
Sure. So any company that wants to operate in the Hunts Point Produce Market, the Meat Market or the Fish Market, they have to apply and get a market registration. That registration is $4,000. That registration is then allows us to conduct an in-depth investigation, very detailed, to look at who owns this company, to make sure that this isn't another attempt by an undisclosed principal who was part of organized crime to try to get back into the market. And keeping in mind, our mandate is to keep the marketplace safe and to prevent organized crime and criminality in the market. And we do that vis-à-vis our review of the application and the investigation that goes with it.
Okay. How often do businesses have to re-register or reapply for, yeah, or renew their registration fee?
It's every three years.
Every three years. So every three years, businesses have to pay $4,000. Now, is this, is this a flat fee? So you may have a business that has 15 employees compared to a business that has 300 employees?
Correct. The application is for the entity, for the business that is applying. So it is a flat fee for the application, but there is, I believe you were trying to discuss photo identifications.
Yeah, that was my next question. Because I know then the business as a whole has to apply. And then you have the individual employees that have to apply. What are their fees?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. That fee is $150, but it's a one-time fee. It is a fee that we then review that individual. And just to give you an example, a couple of years ago, we had an individual that applied for photo identification. When we did the background on it, we found out that individual was associated with organized crime. And therefore, we denied that person's photo identification. So that fee goes towards that background. But there are two separate things. The application fee is for the company and the photo identification is for the employee.
Yes, yes. Now, how often do they need, do, how often does an employee have to renew his identification?
They never have to renew it. At once they... They never have to renew it. At once they receive, once we review it and we determine that they do not lack good character honesty and integrity, they are permitted to to operate in the markets.
Okay, so it's okay. All right, that's that's it. Um, what is your policy in coming into a business and asking to to see the employees' IDs? And the reason I ask is, um, like born and raised here, have many friends that are in the markets. I've heard many complaints about, and I mentioned this in my opening statements, overzealous enforcement officers just walking in, stopping shop, putting everyone against the wall and basically just asking them for their ID. And so I just want to know, what is your, how often does your enforcement officers enter these businesses? And what what, break it down. What is, what is their role?
So so the market agent's role is to go to the markets and they patrol the area either on foot or in a vehicle. When they're, we're now, we're talking about photo identifications in the market. So when they're patrolling by, you know, walking around the markets, they do do inspections of a a a location because we've had situations where companies do not tell us that employees are working there. And then it is because those individuals most likely would not get a photo identification because they have problems with their uh possible criminality or things that would prevent them from getting a photo identification. So we have to do inspections to make sure that the people who are working at the market are individuals that won't cause a safety concern to the rest of the customers at the market as well as the employees. So we make sure that everyone who is there has a photo identification and has been reviewed and has a background. And again, does not lack good character honesty and integrity.
Okay, all right.
It is not often, council member. I can tell you that like the inspections for photo identifications, they're on a case-by-case basis. It'll be because we have information that this certain business has ten employees that has been disclosed to the commission, yet we see twenty employees walking around. Based on that discrepancy, ten employees are not being disclosed. So we have to take a look at that.
Okay, all right. Well, I want to thank you for answering my questions. And again, um, if you can, uh, someone from your office can reach out. I want to connect with your office so that we can have a one-on-one, uh, you know, uh, meeting uh with your commissioner.
Council member Elizabeth Prady just came to this commission, as you know, is appointed by Mayor Adams. She is here. She's excited to have a relationship, not just with the markets, not with the the companies, but she wants that relationship with the city council and have your input with respect to the important matters that affect your constituency. So she and I would look forward to the opportunity to discuss any issues with the market that you have. And we'd love to meet with you at the earliest convenience.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, is it possible that I can ask uh EDC a few questions? I don't want to overstep.
No, you sure can. That's okay.
Thank you.
We're coaching now.
Sabrina, so I I want to go back to the what the the question that we have for Sabrina. Um, you, she's just, she just needs to be unmuted. There you go.
Thank you. There we go. Can you hear me, council member?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I promise that wasn't on purpose. You know, I I expect nothing less than to answer your questions because they're all in in uh, they're all coming from a very good place. I know that.
All right. So we were discussing the dollar amount for the produce market, the facility itself. Um, and I was trying to get an understanding of, well, you mentioned that there's a hundred and thirty million dollars that we currently have from the city. Twenty-five million that is available, that the state has that's available for us. Uh, and um, I'm just trying to, what I'm trying to get at is, what's the cost of the facility? Do we have, do we have an accurate cost? What would it cost to give the produce market a state-of-the-art facility?
Absolutely. So um, like I mentioned earlier to Chair Farias, and and as you know, council member, this is going to be a significant uh uh project, uh, an infrastructure project that is without a doubt is going to need the multiples of the um already committed funding. However, until we have a better sense of the scope of the project, and that's what we're working so closely with the co-op produce market to to identify, until we have a true scope and design, it is, it is very difficult to be able to to give a number. I think we are, I'm not saying that we're not close. I think we are close. But until we have that scope and design, I would hate to throw out numbers without without knowing more about the building that is getting built.
Okay. Where are we with the scope and design? I remember pre-pandemic, there was a sit-down with uh then-President James Patchett that we had with the leadership in the market. And we sat down and um there was an RFDI, I believe, that was being put out there. Where are we?
That's exactly right. So we released an RFEI for this project in August of two thousand nineteen. Uh, we had um, we had respondents to this. We have been working with a respondent alongside the Produce Market Cooperative the entire time. And that the where we are currently is nailing down what are the, what is that scope? What is that final design so that we can attach a number to it and we can attach a construction timeline to it? Um, that isn't stopping us from going out and talking to our friends at the state and federal level um to find additional subsidy. But we really need to kind of fine-tune that scope uh in order to be able to get to that number. Um, I would say we are likely, you know, to to us, we are going to be circling back with you, with the committee. Um, you are one of the first folks we're going to circle back once we have a better sense of the amount that we're talking about.
All right. Do we have a timeline as to when we'll have the scope and design ready?
We, if, I mean, a lot of that is dependent on the, how the conversations with the cooperative go in terms of the needs that they have for this new market. Um, and that is inclusive of building, of circulation, um, inclusive of rail. Uh, we are in constant conversation with them. Uh, if I had to come back to you, I would say that we will absolutely come back to you with an update within the next month. Um, and we expect that within that month, we would be able to make significant progress to come back to you and give you those those details.
All right, thank you. Um, I'm going to hand it off to you, Madam Chair, and then I'll I'll stick around for a second round questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, awesome. Thanks. I'm sorry about your tech difficulty earlier. And I do just want to say thank you um for uh jumping in and tag teaming Mr. Mustakas for helping in the time being and and for sticking around. Um, so I'm gonna ask some resiliency questions because I'm super interested in what what we're looking at. And then I'll go back to some of the workforce stuff that I started with. Um, in two thousand and fifteen, EDC and um uh MRR convened an advisory working group of Hunts Point stakeholders to develop priorities and make recommendations for Hunts Point resiliency improvements. The working group recommended that the city focus on power, energy and coastal protection as it moves forward with the improvements. EDC decided to launch a pilot uh project for power and energy resiliency. Can we get an update on the Hunts Point Energy Resiliency Pilot Project?
Absolutely. Um, and thank you for asking that. So a as we've stated, we are absolutely committed to energy resiliency. Um, in regards to the energy resiliency uh pilot project, um, we are looking to build our solar and storage components of this project, which has been challenged, made challenging due to evolving legislation and supply chain issues. So um similar to what I'm sure you have seen firsthand, COVID nineteen had a significant impact on that supply chain. Um, but we are back at it and looking for ways to advance the energy resiliency as much as possible. Um, we've been working closely to do, to do all the due diligence necessary to ensure that we're doing what's best for the project and what will be the most effective use of the funding. Um, in the time that that has gone by, we are excited uh to finally be at a place where we are formally moving forward um to get this project done.
Awesome. Um, do we have progress of the tri-gen microgrid?
Yeah. So in the time that we initially uh ca- had the tri-generation microgrid come up, there have been significant change circumstances, specifically for the tri-generation portion of this. Um, and primarily, the main factor has been legislation at the city and state level that are moving towards decarbonization, which of course we're supportive of. Um, and so because of the legislation change and the moving away of decarbonization, um, what tri-generation does is use natural gas, but that is the burning of fossil fuels, which if we installed the tri-generation in its original concept, would be burning those fossil fuels um in the long term. And so that is, we are pivoting from that strategy. Uh, and we are looking at how we can build a grid that is based on clean energy generation as much as possible. So that harkens back to the solar piece of this, the battery storage piece of this, which is critical.
Great. And is, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, and focusing on on the backup energy piece.
Perfect. What's the progress of implementing the solar and storage at particularly at MS four twenty-four and PS forty-eight?
Uh, we are moving full steam ahead and and looking to find ways to accelerate the timeline to be able to implement that piece of the project. And we are excited to to come back to you with what that timeline looks like.
Great. And has the EDC supplied uh mobile emergency diesel generators to FTC markets?
We have, we have, uh, as I mentioned earlier, we have implemented a permanent backup power at the meat market. Um, and we are looking to include uh backup power for six hundred Food Center Drive um as well as the produce market at this time.
Great. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, EDC decided to move forward with building floodproofing or hardening over other coastal resiliency measures. Could you provide details on the decision to choose hardening over um any of the other recommendations? I know there was quite a few. Um, and can you provide an update on the progress of building floodproofing at the Meat Market, Crasdale and six hundred Food Center Drive?
Absolutely. So uh, we want to ensure that the FTC, Hunts Point and the city are protected from sandy-like storm surges. We have been able to analyze the risks posed uh to the FTC from multiple types of disasters. Um, based on the current risk, a tailored approach to the at-risk buildings is most appropriate response, not necessarily coastal protection. Uh, we were able to engage in conversations with all tenants so that they understand the risk and create those emergency actions, uh, action plans as well as mitigation efforts. So in the imminent term, in the immediate term, the FTC and markets floor level is naturally already elevated due to loading ducts, which is a very good thing because it protects the food supply. Um, as I mentioned, we are advancing those backup power projects at the produce market. Um, and we were able to achieve backup power for the meat market in addition to HESCO barriers and tiger dams that they have onsite. Um, we are also, to your point of of building specific, actively uh looking for federal granting, grant funds to harden both six hundred Food Center Drive um and the Meat Market Power Building, which are the two buildings most at risk for storm surge. Um, in terms of the fish market, there is a bulkhead already there. And thankfully, their um infrastructure, electric infrastructure is on their mezzanine level and out of the floodplain. So in the long term, we are going to continue to seek funding to further protect the food supply. Um, obviously, climate change is such a huge risk for the entire city. So we need to continue to work cooperatively with city government, state and feds to to ensure that we can protect the FTC.
Yeah, please, please keep us in the loop of any any additional um resiliency efforts that are made. Um, you know, FEMA will be issuing their new floodplain lines really soon. Um, I know my district is going to be impacted as well in that we we are within the floodplain. So um, you know, this infrastructure is too important to the Eastern Seaboard, too important to the tri-state area for us to not make sure that it is protected.
Um, absolutely.
And sorry, I just wanted, just in terms of the the hardening and and these projects, um, I just want to make sure if the estimated cost um is available. And if so, is there current funding committed to building the hardening right now?
We are actively um submitting applications for federal funding uh in order to be able to do that. And I'm I I'm looking into the costs so I can get that to you potentially in the next few minutes.
Great. And do you foresee any huge challenges going forward in terms of coastal resiliency for the markets? I know like there's a lot of times when we look at peninsulas with building seawalls or bulkheads or things like this where we we do have to evaluate like bricocheting of water in another direction or or different things like that. So do you see or foresee any challenges going forward?
Currently, I think we have the right plan in place. And I, you know, I I think there's always, it's something that we are constantly looking at. And and to your point, Chair Farias, is as as the feds release, as FEMA releases those flood plans, um, that's something that we are laser-like focused and ensuring that we feel that the the FTC is protected. Um, in addition to that, one of the things we are, you know, also, as as you think about climate change, for us here at the FTC, um, power outage, right, is is where we're more concerned. And so um, we are really proud that we're kicking off an energy master planning project that's going to evaluate the current opportunities for energy efficiency and decarbonization um in the FTC uh and find strategic pathways for implementation uh of of the city and state's long-term goals here. So I think that's that's an area of focus. And um, and I did get the number for the uh building hardening. It's about twenty million dollars that we would need to harden those buildings.
I'm sorry, I just wanted just want to look at something really quickly. Um, in terms of the twenty million that's needed, do we have any update on? I thought in the resiliency plan for this, there was an awarded twenty million for the Community Development Block Grant. Was that awarded for for this project or was that awarded for um something else? Because I know there was an additional allocation from the city of twenty-five million.
I uh, I don't want to speak, oh, okay. The twenty-five million was for the Energy Resiliency Program. So that's that battery, solar storage and the new concept for the tri-generation microgrid.
Okay. Okay, great. We'll we'll follow up on on questions around that. So just to, just to go back to workforce, um, and then we, I'll see if my colleagues have any questions. Um, the, in two thousand and fifteen, the previous mayor announced a hundred and fifty million investment in the produce market that would create five hundred permanent jobs, nine hundred unionized construction jobs, expand rail capacity, remediate underutilized properties for new buildings, expand modernizing, expands and modernize existing buildings um and strengthen those buildings against flooding. What types of jobs did this investment create? Have those jobs been created and sustained? Um, and are the jobs expected to be created by the produce market redesign?
Absolutely. Um, it's it's a fantastic question. And for us, uh, jobs are are so vital and critical to the Food Distribution Center, good paying jobs. Um, that funding helped retain, uh, again, we have eighty-three hundred jobs out of this distribution center. So that helps retain the two thousand in the produce market, the twenty-five hundred that are located in um the meat market and the close to a thousand jobs in the fish market. Outside of that, that funding also helped bring in Grow NYC, so the New York Regional Food Hub, which we're really excited is is topping off as we speak and will be um adding to that job numbers. The redevelopment of the produce market, uh, we anticipate will have job growth. And we're excited to share those numbers um with you soon, for sure.
Great, thank you. Um, so I asked earlier about what the percentage of the unionized um workers were. Um, my follow-up is, what's the relationship between the unions representing market workers and the EDC?
Well, uh, Danny Kane and I get along really well. But um, in all seriousness, we we look to establish strong partnerships um across the board, whether that's with our tenants and each cooperative, um, whether that's with the businesses that lie within those cooperatives. Uh, we also have very strong partnerships. Um, and I think we are doing a much better job now of building and forging stronger partnerships with local two O two um and are looking forward to continue to build those partnerships with other um unions uh located within the Food Distribution Center.
That's great. Is there a commission or any other entity um for all three markets to work together in negotiations with the city?
That's a great question. Um, I'd love the chance to just think about that a little bit more and circle back with you on that.
Sure. Um, and are the wages at the markets competitive? Sure. Um, and are the wages at the markets competitive?
Yes, the wages at the markets are competitive, thankfully, because the vast majority are union. And I would say that um, COVID nineteen has definitely highlighted um, the, not only the importance of these markets, but the importance of the, of the, uh, workers that are there, um, keeping it going. They, it's been closed for a single day. Um, and so, yes, they are very competitive.
Great. Um, in twenty twenty-one, there was a union labor strike at the market. I know council members, council member Rafael Salamanca and I were there, if not every, every day, almost every day, along with other elected officials supporting, um, our neighbors. Um, just want to ask some questions for, for the record in terms of what that strike meant for our city. Um, how did that impact the regional food supply?
Uh, that was a, that was, I was here. Um, that was a, a scary time and, um, and I would say that, uh, for EDC, uh, those jobs are so vital and so critical. Um, and I think it's, it only shed light on the critical importance of, of having uh, workers there moving. It doesn't move without them, right? And so it is, it is really vital and, and we are so happy that those issues were resolved, uh, because we're a stronger, more vibrant market because of that.
Um, I'm, I'm almost positive it, it was about eleven days. It felt like two, almost two weeks when it happened. Um, what are the terms of the new negotiated labor contract? And how long will it be before it expires?
Uh, we are not privy to that arrangement and to that agreement, but I'm sure Danny and, and Phil can answer those questions.
Yes. Um, and I guess for, for me, you know, and I, and I feel like you touched on this quite a bit. You know, knowing how critical these jobs are of these essential workers and um, I guess going forward, it's, and maybe that is involving and, and thinking a little bit more about, is there something that unifies the negotiations? But, you know, how can we en- ensure negotiations and fair contracts going forward for these essential workers um, are prioritized? Cause we, we do not want, um, to be in a situation like this again.
Uh, absolutely. And I couldn't agree more. And, and we are excited. I mean, we met with, with Danny a few weeks ago to talk about the produce market redevelopment and expect him to be at the table along with the cooperative. Uh, Phil was there as well, um, to ensure that, that we're all aligned when we look at this redevelopment.
Awesome. And by any chance, do we have the percentage of the workforce at the market? Um, that are New Yorkers that live nearby or Bronxites particularly?
Uh, we know that that percentage of Bronxites is, is well above fifty percent. When you look at the entire food distribution center, not just the produce market, as, as each business is unique. Um, but we are laser-like focused in finding ways, um, to bring, to bring Bronxites into these good paying jobs.
Awesome. Thank you so much. I have couple of questions for BIC if possible, bringing back onto the spotlight. Um, and, and you did, you did kind of give a lot of the overview of your jurisdiction. Um, and I just kind of want to fill in some of the gaps that I've had. Um, so if you'd like to give any more overview of BIC jurisdiction over the FTC and how it regulates businesses there, feel free to add anything on. Um, but I particularly would like to know what type of offenses are most common that you're responding to in terms of enforcement.
Sure. Um, last year, uh, the last fiscal year, we had approximately fifteen violations issued. So a majority of those is, or no, those were, um, we actually had more. We had nineteen total violations issued in the last fiscal year. The response is mostly idling of vehicles as well as unregistered activity. So unregistered activity is when a company does not go through the process, does not apply with the commission, starts to operate in the markets. And then therefore the commission has to take action. We issue them an unregistered activity violation. And that is then, um, sent to the office of administrative trials and hearings to be litigated. And hopefully by issuing that violation, they get the point and we then also issue them like the application and have them apply with the commission.
Okay, just for, I guess for myself and probably a lot of other people, can how available is this information in terms of registration? Or like, I guess the initial question that came to mind was how could someone operate within the market without knowing that they have to be registered?
Well, if, if you're going to operate in the three, let's say the produce market or the fish market or the meat market, there's a cooperative and it, it's, it's pretty, pretty common knowledge that you must have a registration to operate in those markets. All of that information is available on our website as well as BIC has a presence there vis a vis a trailer outside of the New Fulham Fish Market. And any documentation that anyone requires, they can get it there. Or we actually send market agents to the location with the applications to give it to them in case there is a language barrier or anything of that nature.
Got it. And do, do most of your documentation and is there multiple languages? I'm assuming Spanish speaking is um, probably one of the most common, but in the Bronx, we have many.
Um, our applications are not, um, are, 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 are not in multiple languages, but we do have individuals here at the commission that speak Spanish. So if there's any questions, we have a Spanish-speaking individual who will, you know, answer any questions anyone has. And that's for other languages too.
Okay, great. Yeah. I mean, I don't know what level of interest BIC has in terms of taking their documentation and making them beyond monolingual. Um, you know, nuance is really important in languages and sometimes just not being able to read documentation or better understand. Um, I'm someone that spoke Spanish first and I'm scared to do Spanish media. So let alone what someone is with an entire registration or application process. Um, so I would, I, I'd appreciate the consideration of looking at how you folks can have that in at least the, the most common language is spoken.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And then my, my last follow-ups are, uh, what's the relationship like between markets and BIC? How does BIC interact with other agencies that regulates part of EDC like USDA, um, doing food safety inspections?
Okay. Uh, so the relationship with the, with the commission and the markets, we have a couple of different ways. The big agents who are there, typically when they start their tour, they check in with the security staff of the each, you know, the three respective markets. So the agents on the ground know what's going on. In addition to that, we also have where our investigation supervisors, they speak to the counterparts in the respective markets. So the supervisors are always constantly in contact. And I think the best way to explain that is like during the pandemic, everyone realizes that it was a very difficult time for the markets. And as a result, we constantly, because we had agents there, were able to get information about what was happening from our colleagues at the markets and pass that information to EDC. Because while we are both agencies and have different responsibilities as EDC is the landlord and we do the regulatory enforcement, it's important that we all work together, especially at that time, that that time information was important to know what business was in trouble, what was happening, real-time information on the ground that we were able to get because of our presence there.
Got it. Thank you so much for sticking around and, and answering all of my follow-ups. I look forward to our continued open dialogue and communication moving forward with the markets.
Absolutely.
With that, I will yield my time and questions, um, and pass that back over to my moderator, Alex.
Uh, thank you, Chair Farias. Uh, we will now turn to Councilmember Salamanca for a second round of questions. Uh, sergeants, we will be limiting the second round of questions to five minutes.
Okay, awesome. Thank you. Uh, and, um, and thank you, uh, Chair. Um, I, I have a, a question, a few questions for BIC. Um, if, if you're, what is your jurisdiction exactly? Is, in, in terms of the businesses?
Yep. So it's the three markets that we've discussed, the New Fulham Fish Market, the produce market, the meat market, as well as that area that is, let's say, north of the fish market and west of the two other markets, which is called the Hunts Point adjacent area.
But there, those, those areas are not owned by the city.
Correct. That is.
So how, 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 why does BIC have jurisdiction over an area that's not owned by, that's not run by the city? Like who set those lines?
That is in our law, the administrative code designates the area where the commission has jurisdiction. We also have jurisdiction over the Brooklyn Meat Market, for example. We have jurisdiction over six wholesale uh, market areas and four of them essentially lie in the Bronx.
Okay. I would, I would, I would like, I know you probably don't have this now, but if you can provide my office with a map of your catchment area, I'm interested in knowing what areas, you know, you actually have jurisdiction over. Um, now, my other question is undocumented individuals. When you come in and you do these fast checks, um, well, are undocumented individuals, are they do, if they are applying for employment in one of the markets, uh, does BIC provide them with a ID?
Citizenship, citizenship status plays no role in our determination of whether an applicant can, uh, receive a photo identification. It is strictly based on whether they have or lack good character on the entire, so if a person's undocumented, that doesn't matter. We provide those, um, the application to everyone.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. Those are my two questions for the, uh, for BIC. Uh, I just have a few more questions for the, uh, for, for EDC. Um, and I'm done. Uh, just want to know where, what's the status of the, uh, the generator, uh, for the, uh, the meat market?
Yeah, uh, thank you, council member. So as you know, because we've been in constant communication on, uh, the backup generation for the meat market. We are very happy to report that those generators are in place, that they are connected to the meat market. And in the event of a disaster, uh, where the power is out, those generators can be turned on and will provide the backup power. We are still a few weeks away from the delivery of that to the meat market. So we're closing out what we would call punch list. And then, uh, by, when that punch list is closed, the meat market can fully adopt the mark, uh, the generators.
When did this project commence?
This project commenced, um, I have to look up the year, but it's, it was several years ago at this point, unfortunately.
Yeah, that's a, that's frustrating to know that, you know, years have gone by and there, and we're still talking about when will this project be complete?
I completely share that frustration with you, council member. And I am, although I am, uh, uh, pleased to know that the market is now protected for backup power. I, I completely agree with you and am in line with your frustration on how long it's taken to get here.
Okay. And finally, the, uh, the meat market capital needs. I know that there's an eleven, a million dollar need uh, for their cooling system. Um, and then I believe there's another, help me, the facade.
Yes, the facade replacements.
Yeah. Are there any, any plans, uh, from EDC, uh, to allocate capital funding so to, to address these two issues?
We are very happy that we are going to be addressing the, uh, building that is in worst condition um, at the market and are already underway to begin, um, that process of, of replacing that entire facade for that one building. Um, and as you know, we have been working closely with, with your office. We have also had the opportunity to, to meet with the mayor, um, to let him know the, the urgent need for both the brine system, um, and as well as the, as the remaining funding needed for the, uh, facade replacements.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm done with my line of questions.
Thank you, council member.
And you, Councilmember Salamanca, we're going to turn, uh, back to the other members. Uh, if there's any other members who wish to ask a question of the administration, please use the zoom raise hand function now. Seeing no additional, oh, Councilmember Gutierrez has a question. Uh, Councilmember Gutierrez, we'll turn to you.
Time starts now.
Thank you so much. And thank you, uh, Chair Farias, uh, for holding it down for the whole committee. I feel like every time I'm on this, it's a marathon uh, of a hearing. Uh, Sabrina, so good to see you. Um, and I, I've have not, I've not visited the market too much, but I really enjoy hearing, um, just the, the proposal for this project, the investments. And obviously I think for me in district, there before I have a vested interest in understanding how EDC, um, is envisioning some kind of support for the market in, I'm gonna get to Williamsburg, which actually I'm gonna be doing a walk-through with y'all soon. Um, but I am particularly interested in a piece and I was late, but I do know that you addressed the, um, individual lease agreements with the particular vendors. Can you explain, if you did that already, I'm so sorry, but can you explain a little bit more? Because I think what I heard was saying that it was, um, that every kind of vendor has a different lease agreement, different terms. Can you explain a little bit more about what that policy is? Um, and when, if and when you all use uniform, uh, lease agreement policies?
Absolutely. And Councilmember Gutierrez, excited to address you and to see you a little bit later this afternoon. Um, yes, to answer that question, that's exactly right. Every, every lease is treated, uh, uniquely and differently, um, based on the tenant that we are working with. Uh, the vast majority, so we have ten, ten tenants, uh, that represent over a hundred businesses. Each cooperative is what we consider one tenant. Um, and so the way those leases are structured vary. Uh, but the vast majority of them are what we call ground leases. Uh, they range from anywhere between forty-five-year leases up to ninety-nine years, which is the longest term of disposition that we're able to do. And part of that is to allow each business, each tenant to have the opportunity to almost play owner of the space, um, and, and to allow them to invest in their own space to find the financing in order to do that. And that term allows them the flexibility to be able to know that they have a significant amount of term, um, to play with.
That's right. Um, thank you. And just that you could reemphasize, I think, um, Chair Farias asked about the, um, opportunity for capital investments for each individual vendor. Um, what is that process like for a vendor who's interested in wanting to invest in their own um, site? And, and what is like, what is the, um, I guess the marriage looks like between EDC as I think landlords of the site and the vendor?
Absolutely. And that also varies depending on the lease provisions. Uh, there are certain tenants that undergo their own capital infrastructure improvements that we simply approve and ensure that is aligned with, um, the lease provisions. And then there are other, uh, tenants such as the cooperatives, all three of them, uh, that serve such a vital function to the New York City's food supply chain. So what we do is we work with them constantly, uh, at the meat market, we sit as an example on their board um, and learn about what their infrastructure needs are, uh, and then be able to work with them, uh, in order to make those new need capital requests. Um, and so we, we, it's really lockstep. We've been, we've put together the project list um, and we jointly go and, and, and look for the city for funding.
Okay. Well, thank you. Um, those are my questions because I am curious about how similar models can work throughout the other property, EDC properties. Um, but, um, thank you so much for this opportunity. And those are, those are my questions. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Uh, now we will turn it back to Chair Farias, uh, before we move on to the public portion of our testimony.
I don't have any other additional questions, so kicking it back to you.
Great. Thank you, Chair. Uh, and thank you to the members of the administration for the testimony today. We'll now move on to public testimony. Uh, I'd like to remind everyone that unlike in our typical council hearings, we will be calling on individuals one by one to testify. Uh, today we will be limiting public testimony to three minutes each. Uh, sergeants, please, uh, begin your testimony once the sergeants have started the timer. The council members who have questions for a particular panelist should use the zoom raise hand function. And I will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. Uh, for panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you. And then the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. So please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. Uh, the first panelist we will hear from today will be Philip Grant, followed by Arthur Goldstein, and then Bruce Rangel. Uh, Mr. Grant, you may begin when the sergeants announce the time.
Time starts now.
Good afternoon. My name is Philip Grant. I'm the chief executive officer of the Hunts Point Produce Market, the largest produce market in the nation. Thank you, Chair Farias, and our very own council member Rafael Salamanca, as well as the other esteemed members of the Economic Development Committee for organizing this here and around such a vital topic as food infrastructure. The Hunts Point Produce Market has been an essential part of New York City's food infrastructure with its roots going back to seventeen ninety and continues to do the important work of keeping New York City fed. Keeping New York City fed for over four generations. The market was originally located in Man- Manhattan and relocated in nineteen sixty-seven to our current site, a hundred and thirteen acres in the Bronx. The Hunts Point Produce Market, along with several other large public markets, is known as the Hunts Point Food Distribution Center. We are major employers of Bronxites and the jobs at the food distribution center are largely comprised We are major employers of Bronx sites, and the jobs at the food distribution center are largely comprised of union labor and have historically provided salaries more than one-third higher than the average of other industries in the Bronx. The Hunts Point Produce Market is an essential intermodal freight facility that provides twenty-five percent of New York City's produce. Every year, more than two and a half billion pounds of produce sourced from forty-nine states and across the globe, passed through the market, feeding New Yorkers and the greater region. The market has a customer base that includes the corner push carts, the neighborhood bodegas, the twenty-five hundred independent green grocers, the Wegmans and Whole Foods and everything in between. We like to say that if you were eating an apple, it most likely came from the market. The Hunts Point Produce Market employs nearly two thousand direct workers, sixty-five percent being Bronx-based union labor, while also supporting an estimated seven thousand indirect jobs in the region. As I mentioned before, the market was built in nineteen sixty-seven. The market continues to work hard in an aging facility to keep pace with New York City's ever-growing food demand in the most diverse city in the world. That is why we are grateful to Mayor Eric Adams for making the Hunts Point Produce Market a priority within his first hundred days in office and committing a hundred million dollars to market's redevelopment. We have been working closely with New York City Economic Development Corporation. Thank you, Sabrina and team. The goals of this redevelopment project are to strengthen and expand our food supply chain by building a food safety and cold chain compliant facility, able to keep up with the demands of our growing city. Work to make food more accessible to food insecure communities and support the development of new jobs in small businesses. The redevelopment project is estimated to create one thousand net new direct jobs, most of which will be union labor and supporting thirty-five hundred net indirect jobs at the market. Again, thank you, Chair Farias, and the esteemed members of the Economic Development Committee, and for the opportunity to discuss the incredible impact the Hunts Point Produce Market has on New York City. I look forward to one day having you tour our market so that you could see with your own eyes our complex and massive operation. Thank you. A welcome questions.
Thank you so much for your testimony, Philip. I've, I'm looking forward to coming by one day. Um, I know that that will be soon. The mayor did put me in a freezer for a press conference a couple of weeks ago, so I have seen some of it. Um, I have, I have two questions. Just from your perspective, what are the top issues facing the markets today? Um, and what does long-term success look like for you at the FTC?
Uh, the, the two issues facing us, and, and, and once again, thank you, Councilmember Salamanca. Thank you, Sabrina and team, you know, um, you know, and thank you to the mayor for this hundred million dollar, uh, uh, investment. Uh, the top issue facing us now is, uh, space, you know, we've outgrown our, um, you know, our facility. Uh, so space and age, uh, our infrastructure is aged. We've been here since nineteen sixty-seven. We're well past a useful life. The city where, you know, as Sabrina said earlier, we're working to figure out what works for merchants. When we look at what works, we're thinking about the next fifty-five years. You know, and then those are some of the hard work that we're doing closely with, uh, the EDC alongside Councilmember to figure out what, 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 what works here. Uh, the next, uh, issue that, uh, that's, uh, challenging for us here is just really, uh, working to, um, you know, uh, continue keeping up with our, our, our labor. I mean, labor's always been a, uh, a, a thing, labor meaning, uh, retaining and finding folks, um, outside of you. Uh, so those are some of the things that we're, we're looking towards.
Great, thank you.
Great, uh, thank you, Mr. Grant. And next up, we will hear from Arthur Goldstein, followed by Bruce Rheingold, and then Dan Kane. Uh, Mr. Goldstein may begin when the sergeant's called the time.
Thank you, I apologize, my, my video is not working, but, um, I, I work with, uh, Phil Grant, uh, doing government relations, uh, for many years for the produce market. And just want to say I look forward to having, uh, committee members visit, uh, the produce market. And I also happen to re- represent the fish market, so hopefully you could visit there as well. Uh, but in terms of the rebuild for the market, um, we, we are going to need an incredibly strong partnership, which we already have with the, the city of New York, uh, with Andrew Kimball and, and Mayor Adams and, and the work that Sabrina's doing and her team, uh, and we're going to need the state and the federal government. There's, there's no way to meet the numbers that we are, are projecting, uh, without a strong partnership, a united, uh, city council, uh, borough president, uh, understanding the value of the produce market. Uh, we'll all have to work together to communicate that to the state and, and federal level to have a, um, excellent rebuild. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Next, we will hear from Bruce Rheingold, followed by Dan Kane, and then Andy Sussman. And Mr. Rheingold, you may begin when the sergeant's called the time.
Time starts now.
Yeah, hi, um, I'm Andrew Sussman. I'm president of the Hunts Point Market. Um, uh, Mr. Rheingold, who's our general manager, had to step away and he's unable to make a statement today. But I can make it on behalf of the Hunts Point Meat Market. I'm president of the market, and I'm president of Plymouth Beef Company, one of the forty-two vibrant businesses that operate within the Hunts Point Market. So I'm speaking from a business standpoint as well as market management standpoint. Um, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all today. I speak, I, I appreciate the, uh, ongoing support of, um, Councilman Salamanca, who's a good friend to all the markets. Um, and I don't want to be redundant. A lot was said about our markets. Uh, but understand that, again, forty-two vibrant businesses. We feel it's a great place to do business. A lot of these businesses had opportunities and still have opportunities to relocate to other locations with more modern facilities than we have in Hunts Point. But because New York City is such a great place to do business with proximity to both the city itself and the region, because this market not only serves the city of New York, but it serves the region as well. Um, most of us have stayed here, invested here. Uh, I'm a New York City resident. I was educated here and I've kept my business here. Um, so, uh, forty percent of the protein, you know, again, we're talking about various different markets. The, uh, beef, chicken, pork protein that is distributed, whether it's, uh, to all the supermarkets, uh, restaurants, schools, hospitals, hotels, and other feeding institutions run through this market. Um, as well as, as was mentioned, the New York City Food Bank operates within the Hunts Point Meat Market, which is a, um, historic and very important resource to the city of New York and the underserved and the underfed, and that operates here within the meat market. Um, and, uh, COVID obviously was a huge, uh, left hook to these businesses, but they were, uh, deemed essential. Uh, we operated during COVID. We made sure that there was meat on the shelves, in whether it's a supermarket, the various home delivery services that cropped up, not only through our city but our region, and we were here to support them. We managed these businesses when people obviously were sick. We had to provide transportation. And, um, we really did the best we could to serve our ci- to, to serve our city. And because the Hunts Point Market exists, uh, the food shortages that existed, um, and in some cases exist to this day because inflationary, uh, pressures were not as acute as they could have been if the city had to be pulling its food sources from outside the city, because we're right here. We all have relationships with the direct, large agriculture companies, whether it's a Cargill, a Tyson, a Swift, they ship directly. The state of New York is, as you all know, that's too bad, because there's some more important points to make here. Can I, can I stand for two minutes?
Yeah, yes.
Because there's a lot of repetition. Um, the, um, the state of New York is doing a great job. I mean, we're all sitting in traffic now. Uh, fortunately, it's affecting the diesel, uh, that's, that's, that's running and work hours with the traffic, but there, you know, as you all know, the DOT is providing direct links to the Bruckner and to the Sheridan into our market. So the trucks no longer have to run through the neighborhood, increasing asthma rates, which is a concern to all of us, and it'll also help the businesses that operate here on the point. As stated, the markets operate on city land. EDC is our asset manager. Uh, you know, if we look at a twenty-year, um, you know, arc of relationship, going back to the Bloomberg administration and before, quite frankly, not so terrific. But the last, at the end of the Blasio administration into this administration, um, EDC is way more engaged with the markets for its improvement, for its employees, and the relationship has never been better as, um, Sabrina has indicated. Look, the markets, this is New York City, the greatest city in the world. The market, this market should be on par, and when I say market, it's the meat market, produce market, and fish market plus the other seven hundred food businesses that operate on the point. At the end of the day, this market should be on par with its peer markets nationally, and quite frankly, internationally. I don't knock it because I have a huge investment here, but I mean, if you saw the markets in London to the markets in Los Angeles, guys, it's a disgrace. And finally, a forum like this is, is, is coming along. Investments are being made, because again, the businesses can only maintain the market and take care of our spaces, and that's what we do. But we can't rebuild the market. The history of the market was this thing was built in the sixties. So we have the original refrigeration system. So that's why when we talk about challenges and capital needs, which are being talked about on this call, and I can only speak to the meat market right now. You know, our refrigeration systems need to be upgraded. Our masonry is falling apart. If you visit here, you'll see netting over building E and F. I mean, that's just sitting there waiting for a solution. The masonry is coming down, as long as tremendous amount of site work. Uh, you know, whether it's paving or other things here, you know, you're running, when the market was designed, you know, you were dealing with, uh, twenty-five foot straight job trucks, running fifty-five foot trailers now into this market, and the infrastructure is completely falling apart. So i- 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 you know, all of that. You have companies here that are prepared to expand, to spend private dollars to expand, which is more employees. We of the eighty-five hundred employees mentioned earlier, uh, represent twenty-five hundred of them, primarily Hispanic, primarily African-American, uh, primarily union jobs. We have local three forty-two and a Teamsters local here. Um, they're Bronx residents. They're all ma- were making a living wage. Um, and there's opportunity for expansion, but we need the support of the city council, more people than just, uh, Salamanca. And finally, uh, we're having some traction with Gracie Mansion, which is actually very exciting. The other thing, which is a big challenge and we're dealing with it.
I don't mean to cut you off, Mr. Sussman, but if you can do this in the next
I'm wrapping it up, wrapping it up.
Okay.
Two more quick points. One is the red tape, even when there are public funds that are shown to us, the red tape and the mayor, we had a call with the mayor last week. He's like, there's red tape. We don't even know why there's red tape. There is so much red tape with OMB to any of these funds. Salamanca said, how did it take so many years for the generators? Because of the red tape. And then also, uh, you know, not to throw anybody under the bus, but when you hire people like McKissick, this is what happens. So that's all I have to say, and I appreciate your time. I speak frankly, and, uh, you know, I'm in the meat business and, uh, I'm a loyal New Yorker.
We, I appreciate your testimony, and I took lots of notes. Thank you so much. And you can count me in as someone along with Councilmember Salamanca that is here to support everyone at the market, so feel free to reach out to me as well.
Thank you, and I appreciate your time, and, uh, this is, you know, these are the ABCs of me, but thank you for your time. It was a pleasure to be here today.
For sure.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Sussman. Next, we will hear from Dan Kane, followed by Wendy O'Shields. Just a reminder to anybody who wishes to testify whose name has not been called, please use the Zoom raise hand function now or submit your testimony to testimony@council.nyc.gov within seventy-two hours of the close of the hearing. Uh, Mr. Kane, you may begin when the sergeant's announced the time.
Time starts now.
Mr. Kane, you're on mute.
Uh, Mr. Kane, we're trying to unmute you, but there you go. Yeah.
All right. Uh, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chairperson and the committee and people from EDC and the, and the city of New York. Uh, infrastructure, governmental infrastructure. Uh, my name is Dan Kane, and I proudly represent Teamsters Local Two-O-Two and, uh, approximately sixteen hundred members that work on the food center, uh, and another four hundred that work in, in, in that area in the South Bronx. Uh, my history is I started out on the loading docks of Hunts Point, uh, nineteen eighty-one as a, as a teenager, and then returned to work there afterwards. Uh, it's, it's a place that does provide, uh, hope and opportunity in the future for people, uh, for working-class people and people who struggle, uh, to attain regular full-time employment. This is a place that lifted my family out of poverty, uh, and I want to see that happen for the future generations. Uh, that being said, those are, those are interests that we've all spoke about here today. We spoke about the climate in- interests and the infrastructure interests that will, uh, uh, that we need to improve. Uh, we need to move into the twenty-first century uh, with how we distribute these products. They're essential products, and they're important. But sometimes I think that we don't realize this impact that the market has. The market is a unique place. Many cities in this country do not have a market system to distribute these products, and therefore limits the diversity of the products sold. So New York is one of five or six cities in this, in this country with, i- it has the most diverse food line in the country. And culture in our city is very important. These markets are the backbone of the culture of our city. The city's number one in- industry, one of the top industries, is tourism. People come to New York City because of its culture. They come to New York City because it's New York. It's one of the things we love about living here. Uh, and that manifests itself in food, and these markets provide a diversified palate, and I think sometimes in all the other stuff that we talk about, which is very important. My members are important, and all the other workers are important. There's other Teamsters that work there. But just imagine a New York City with only, with only three or four food service companies that would provide the, 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 the food and, and the, and the the product line to New York City. Those cities do exist in this country. And, and while I represent people at US Foods, and while I represent people at Cisco, which are the biggest food service company, service coun- companies in this country, the, the markets have a more diverse food product line that directly affects this city's large industry of tourism. And we can never forget that. Yes, all those other things that we spoke about, and I could speak to them for a very long time, and I will not take up your time because everybody spoke about what the jobs mean, what the infrastructure, what the climate change. We all know that those things have to be addressed. But I think sometimes we miss this one. Uh, people come to a Broadway show, they stay three nights, they eat three times, they go to one show.
I'm expired.
Very, very important to understand that, what it means to the macroeconomic uh, situation in this city of New York, and I, and I all those other in- interests are important. I want to see these markets stay here so that people have these opportunities. But remember what it means to the the Five Boroughs and beyond. Thank you. If anybody has any questions for me on, on any one of those issues, I'll gladly answer them, but, uh, trying to stay within the time.
I appreciate that. I do not have any questions, but, um, I'm, I do want to continue the conversation on the connection between food and tourism and our city's economy, along with our food economy industry um, offline, Dan, if that's good.
Sure.
Um, and I see we have a little issue with Alex, but I'm happy to move on to the next testimony. Um, Wendy O'Shields, if you can unmute yourself, you are up.
Time starts now.
I'm actually not testifying today, everyone. I was just listening in.
Oh, okay, great. Well, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other hands from any of my colleagues, um, I will move to close really quickly. Is there any procedural items before I give my closing? I'm going to take his silence as a no. Uh, so thank you to everyone who testified today on this really important and critical issue for the Bronx, Hunts Point, and our food economy in our city. Um, this hearing has highlighted the many projects we have going on and the need for follow-up on each. Um this hearing has highlighted the many projects we have going on and the need for follow-up on each of them for the betterment uh of of a critical distribution center we have here in our city and uh our critical essential workforce. I look forward to this continued conversation and oversight on projects and the investments that are being made. Thank you to all my colleagues, members of my committees that came and asked questions, um Councilmember Rafael Salamanca, uh my committee and office staff for today. Um this hearing is now adjourned at two fifty-eight. Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good rest of your day. Goodbye.